The number of hours that city staff has spent on reviewing and re-reviewing and working with Daninbaum to make those corrections. So for example, for VOE staff, city staff have logged forty-one hours on invoicing tasks for thirteen invoices. For BOV, we spent thirty-three hours on invoicing tasks alone. For Arterio One, we've spent sixty-five hours on invoicing tasks, on thirteen invoices. On Novo Rico Tanks, it's been forty-five hours. And so on and so forth. And just the reason why we bring this up is because our department is a department of two people. And we also have a lot of other special projects, including economic development, grants, and just a lot of stuff. And so these are, we really would like to maximize this process so that our staff is able to lead new and exciting projects for the city. Just as an example, I'd like to provide a little record of one invoice, for example. So if you look at Arterio One, invoice number two, we submitted, we originally submitted that invoice to Techstar on March tenth, twenty twenty-one. Techstar then returned that with comments for us. And then we worked with Daninbaum to address those comments, and they were addressed, they did work with us. We resubmitted that invoice on April twenty-third, twenty twenty-one. There were additional comments from Techstar, as you can see on the next column. We also worked with Daninbaum on those corrections. We were able to put everything together. We have had several meetings with Daninbaum in person, and we've also spoken over the phone regarding what is needed in the backup. We resubmitted that invoice on July nineteenth. On July twentieth, we received additional comments from Techstar. Again, we worked with Daninbaum on that. We were able to submit that again on September twenty-second of twenty twenty-one. Again, we received another comment from Techstar, and these are, of course, the comments are, like, for example, regarding a hotel fee, it has to be exactly as approved upon in the contract. So those are the ten, very small, but very important issues that Techstar is bringing up. We were able to submit again on September twenty-fourth. At that point, we did not receive any further comments, and we were finally reimbursed for that one invoice on October twenty-fifth. So as you can see, from the time that we submitted that first reimbursement request on March tenth, to the time we received reimbursement, it was eight months, and that was for one invoice. So it does take a lot of back and forth. I would like to thank the Daninbaum team for the work that they do. They have a lot of engineers and people working with them. And we appreciate their work. However, this is an issue that needs to be resolved. It is very important, and it does open the city up for liabilities and potential audit findings. Angel is our man that is on the front lines, looking at all these invoices along with myself, so he can provide additional context.
Good evening, members of the council. My name is Salzilo. I'm the grants and funding specialist for the grants department here at the city of Socorro. As Ms. Valades just mentioned earlier, during our last meeting with Daninbaum, we requested a thorough QA QC of all previously submitted invoices. In addition to that meeting, I spoke with Ms. Cardenas over the phone during, sorry, over the phone, and Ms. Cardenas asked me if we would like a thorough QA QC of all the previously submitted. To which, we confirmed once again that we would like to review once more. That meeting and phone call took place at the start of last month, December. Once again, since that meeting slash call, we have yet to receive any of the corrected invoices from Daninbaum. Now, I want to clarify something. When I say "received any," I mean the request we made for the QA QC of all the previously submitted ones. We have received a handful of corrected invoices, but the only reason we received them was because myself, Ms. Valades, or Ms. Menaf from Techstar found errors and directly requested corrections. Without us directly requesting, we have not received the corrections by today. Not receiving these corrective invoices has slowed Ms. Valades and I even further. Today, we're supposed to submit, uh, today, we're supposed to submit reimbursement requests for two projects. Novo Rico Tanks Road and Arterio One. While reviewing the invoice for Novo Rico Tanks Road prior to submitting, we caught a total of eight errors on one invoice. We, in total, reviewing this invoice cost us around four to five hours each. We were not able to submit the reimbursement or even start to review for the Arterio One invoice. A situation like the one that occurred today could have been prevented if we had received the previously requested corrected invoice. As Ms. Valades mentioned, this has slowed us down a lot. This is not the only thing we have on our plate in the grants department. However, it's taking up a majority of it, which is unnecessary because this is an issue that is solved through effort and just reviewing the invoices. When I first started in the grants department and I got this assignment, I found errors within the first month of my starting department. I say that just to illustrate that this is an issue that can be solved very easily. It just takes a matter of effort and time. Now, with regards to the Daninbaum invoices as a whole, a meeting was held earlier this week. The grants department came over to the city of Socorro. During this meeting, the invoices were discussed, and an idea was proposed to help facilitate the invoicing/reembarrassment review process. That said idea was that of an invoice and backup checklist. I've produced a mock checklist as an example of what the official checklist should, uh, could look like if this idea were to be approved. If necessary, I can provide all involved parties a digital copy of this checklist. If approved, this checklist would be required as a form of certification to Daninbaum that all applicable backup documentation is included, and that it is full and complete prior to submitting to the city for review.
I would also like to point out that Ms. Blanca Serrano from Techstar is available on the call if you'd like, she'd like to speak. Mr. Mayor, would you like to add any additional information?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Techstar, I'm the local government coordinator for the district. I'm not sure if I can read the audio very well.
I'm sorry, you sound very, very muffled.
I'm sorry, I'm having a little bit of a difficulty to hear you clearly today. I'm hearing you very well, but I'm here.
Thank you. Please sit down.
Okay. Uh, this was, uh, you know, my information on invoices, um, we actually have a meeting for earlier, with the city manager, a couple of, uh, Ms. Valades and a couple of people at the finance department. And I can reach to them that, you know, we have to be very careful with the way, you know, we process these invoices because, you know, we have it. Our, my office is a lot of, like, Ms. Valades says, she's an office of two, our office is also an office of maybe just like three of us. And we do have several customers, not just the city of Socorro, we have everybody, every other government, we have that all quite personally. We have to pay, just like the city of Socorro, how much our new invoices. This point, back and forth, the back and forth, as I mentioned to my partner earlier in the week, it's actually something that we need, and, you know, even though we're in the past, we see this quite a bit of, 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 because, uh, every time we do an invoice, any, any type of, uh, time to spend reviewing invoices or even working on your projects, because you have to charge time to the project. And, uh, and a lot of those hours accumulate, and at the end of the project, and at the end of the project, you know, end up accumulating the hours, doing kind of, you know, how much time you spend on invoices, or any, anything other we spend as far as we push for the projects. And, uh, we, we do charge ahead of time on all the external costs, which is usually more than due time. And if it does turn out at the end of the project, that we end up having, you know, a lot more expense, which we have in this space, then we actually, that was the important thing in the project, and so I ended up saying we still support another bill for additional funds that was planned on the project, so we try to be as careful as possible without, you know, spending on the projects, but unfortunately, for these invoices, it hasn't been possible. It's just been a back and forth, a back and forth, or, or probably a year, year and a half, once in time, and it's, um, it's just, you know, it's just, we don't remember things. Going to past traditional plans, when it's all said and done, and the second, the third, you know, we haven't been able to reverse it, it's all the cost to do funding as far as, um, our direct state costs, so just, just to keep that in mind, if you guys would get, um, are you going to be solving the situation with the invoice?
May I ask you? Thank you, Ms. Serrano. And that's enough to have, uh, it seems like it's just buildup of frustration. I do feel that after our December twentieth meeting, there's been less communication. I mean, I just don't know how to fix this without their cooperation. And I know they're cooperating, but it just doesn't seem they're putting in enough effort. I mean, they need to hire an accounting firm to get this invoicing under control, that's probably what they need to do. But right now, it is extremely frustrating because it is taking a lot of hours for one team, where we can be focusing on other projects, you know, to be competitive more. Right? But we can't do that if we can't get reimbursed for our, the money that's running around. And we didn't make the math, it's been about two point two million dollars that's been paid off. I think that happened if you accept numbers. I, we're only in charge of eighty percent of that, so she has that information. Right, so we paid to, so far, uh, through what is the date that we've been built, which is September thirtieth of twenty twenty-one. We have been built for October, November, December. Uh, but through September thirtieth, we paid approximately three point three million. Out of that, approximately eighty percent will be reimbursed. But to date, we've only been reimbursed five hundred and eighty thousand dollars, up to date. And we still haven't received invoicing for October, November, December, correct? No, ma'am. So we're already in January, and I've, you know, we're three months of invoicing that I haven't seen, that we're gonna have to review. And it's just, it feels like a vicious cycle. Um, I, you know, I think that I worked with Daninbaum for, since two thousand sixteen, we've never had an issue. When we did, we would fix it and kind of move on, but right now, it just seems a bit redundant.
May I have a chance to respond to some of these, if you can come in? Madam Mayor, members of the council, Ms. Reda, and the city staff, I appreciate the opportunity to be here. I came with a really different intention and, and a conciliatory kind of a intent to get this thing worked out. But, you know, I'll go right to the point, and I'll answer some of the questions. I'll be more than happy to answer and clarify, you know. Would you be kind enough to... One of the topics that we talked about in the last council meeting, and hopefully all of this is gonna clarify a lot of the issues that we had, um, was when did we notify, when did the corporate get notified of these issues? If you'd be kind enough to... Yeah, could you, um, please open up the slide two, please? One, this topic, basically, that this clarification was, when did the C corporate knew about the invoicing issues? It did not, this issue, as you may see on the screen, and it may be too small, but I'll be more than happy to provide a hard copy of this. June twenty-second, twenty twenty-one. I was copied simply as an FYI by the former project manager on this project. And he basically says, "There was no corporate action needed and/or required anything." And if you look at the comments on the screen, it says "minor comments." If you go to the slide three, please. November ninth, twenty twenty-one. I was again copied by the former project manager on an email stating that "We have had some issues with the invoices, and some of them belong to the city of Socorro." You can see that, the date on there, and this is basically, uh, six days before, uh, he was, he was dismissed. November fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. The gentleman was released, whereas we sent, as a normal practice, we sent a letter to all of our clients, including the city of Socorro. What we received is an alarming email that, that, you know, we have had, we do have concerns. And this is basically a typical thing that we send to all of our, um, clients, majority of which are our public agencies. We got, including Techstar. We didn't get any pushback from anybody, and they accepted the change, and with the exception of City of Socorro, which we really don't have a reply to this day. November seventeenth, twenty twenty-one. D C president, who's here, myself and deputy project manager, Jose Reyes, met with the city of Socorro, and that basically meeting was the first time that we were told that we got this giant problem of the invoices. Going to the other issue. It is basically discussed that the invoices are wasting the city staff because of issues and comments on the invoices attributed to us. There is some validity to that, and I don't, you know, deny the fact that there has been some mistakes, and it is typically on invoices. However, all the delays were not a result of comments on invoices caused by D E C. There were some contradicting, and I will provide you, uh, information, directives that, that in terms of what the documents accompanying the invoices were required to be. If you would be kind enough to go to slide four. Initially, we were told invoices are to be accompanied by timesheets and expense receipts. This is when we started the, basically, the process. That directive was changed based on a June first, twenty twenty-one email from city of Socorro that timesheets are not necessary anymore. July twentieth of the same, twenty twenty-one, email directive came from the city of Socorro based on a conversation with Techstar, uh, including timesheets and receipts. Those are needed. Anything that we had submitted prior to this last email of July twentieth was basically, was not gonna be accepted, and it was gonna be thrown out, and we had to restart all over again. However, at this point, you know, we had submitted an invoice, if you would be kind enough to go to number five, please. This is the email from Ms. Alejandro. Basically, everything that I highlighted here, June first, twenty twenty-one. He tells you, everything that's highlighted, you can see, there is no timesheets needed. And July twentieth, we get this directive that this is changed, we need timesheets now. Sure. This is slide five. Can you, would you be kind enough to go to six, please? Okay, this is the invoice that we just received. This invoice was worked, performed during January of twenty twenty-one. Our invoice was submitted to the city on February twenty, uh, February twenty-third. We received comments from Techstar on June twenty-second, almost four months later. And based on the comments that we got, we prepared and submitted, we submitted the revised invoice in, on May twenty-third of the very same year, uh, which is basically, um, yeah, and I do have a hard copy, but anyways, what I wanted to point out to you, this was submitted in June, after, in July, I'm sorry, in July. But if you look at the arrow that I'm pointing to, the email that we just received, that we are talking about, that there are comments and issues with the invoice, is twelfth of January of twenty twenty-two. There were some gaps that I cannot explain, I'm not pointing a finger, but it's not fair to throw muscle under the bus on this issue. There is a hard copy that I, what I've made, and I'll be more than happy to, to show it, would you be kind of, give it the copy here? This is the letter that we received from the city on January, no, this, actually, the January sixth. I'll wait till you get the copy of the invoice. On the first page, if you look, this is the letter that city of Socorro sent to Techstar on January sixth, twenty twenty-two. Techstar replied on January twelfth. Basically, it took him six days. But if you go through the, the chronology of this, of this invoice, you look at the, the May twenty-third of twenty twenty-one, we submitted the revised invoice. And the invoice has been sitting since then, January sixth is the time that it has been submitted to Techstar. And I have some other spreadsheets, like, okay, another topic that was discussed is a, that the city of Socorro has not been reimbursed for the, uh, because of the, uh, two million dollars because of the invoice related issues. There is some validity, I, I, I take the responsibility for that, but there have been sizable time gaps between when we submitted the invoices to city of Socorro and when we received comments from Techstar. Again, I am not, I don't know the details, I don't have all of the facts. This is basically what I have shared with you. If you would, please, um, pull up the slide seven. On this slide, you can see, the very first top arrow shows from the time that we submitted the invoice to the time that we received comments, hundred and fifty-five days. The next one below it, hundred and, I can't read it right here, from a hundred and twenty-two days, the one above it is a hundred and eighty-one weeks. This is not, this is not just by itself. Let's go to, and I can give you... If you would, you can pull up slide eight as well, please. This is the subdivision contract that we have, and you do have a, um, reverse hold from, from the calendar. What is the largest number that you see on there in terms of the number of days that we have submitted our, our invoices? Four hundred and forty days. How many businesses out there can basically accommodate four hundred and forty days being not paid and not saving, and continuing working? If you can pull up the slide nine, please. This was one of the other issues that came up during our discussion, that we have invoiced, that we had basically indicated that we're working on a thirty percent set of plans, and we are invoicing for more than what was invoiced. If you look at, on the left side, all of the phases of the project are listed on the left side. Alternative analysis, thirty, sixty, ninety, and a hundred percent design. And on the estimated, um, dollar amounts, those are what dollar amounts are valued for each of those phases, the phases. And the next column to it is basically the percentage of those phases that, uh, amounts to a hundred percent in totality for the project. Now, you go to the furthest right, and the last two columns. We have submitted, basically, what we have done is we completed alternative analysis, we're about ninety percent complete, and that's the value that you get if you multiply ninety percent times the estimated fee on the second column on the left, that's what you end up with. Thirty percent design, which was mentioned, the implication, or at least implied that we were, uh, working on a thirty percent. Thirty percent set of plans, seventy percent complete, and that's a dollar amount. So the bottom line is, if you look at what we have come up with, is we have invoiced for almost two percent, less than what we have, um, completed in terms of our work. But the issue is, is we get a snapshot of what's going on, and... Let me see if I can... Then if you can, um, show me slide, uh, ten, please. This is the other project, and you can see, look at the, the furthest column to the right, you don't have that in your packet, but that's just basically, uh, you can see. The numbers in terms of the days that the invoices have been out without being paid or having, there's no, you know, there's no comments from these, there's nothing. I mean, this is for city of Socorro.
Mayor, uh, mayor, council people, Ms. Valade, and city staff. Uh, my name is Ashad Luxud, I'm the president, CEO of D E C. I think, uh, I think where we are now is we inherited some issues. I think both from the city's side and from our side, from the D E C's side. All these, all these invoices were known by the prime PM, and this was, uh, you know, we didn't find out about this stuff until, I didn't find out about this stuff until, until we were told at the, uh, at the November seventeenth meeting. So, really and truly, what, what, so these, uh, old invoices were prepared, and were prepared in good faith according to certain method. And they were prepared by our ex-project manager, uh, who's, who's not on with us. We take full responsibility for those, we're not saying we don't take responsibility, we take full responsibility for them. But from that point, is when we instituted a QA QC process. After, after, after these issues were brought to us, we instituted QA QC process for the newer invoices, for, for what we were gonna submit afterwards. We didn't get a chance to go back and then revisit every invoice that was submitted before. Because these, these invoices are a year old, and you, you get comments from, from before, right? So they're catching up to us as we, as, uh, as we are, they've already been submitted. So the, uh, we definitely chose not to, purposely not to invoice for October, November, and December because at the last meeting, uh, we, we understood that it was getting to be too much from the invoicing, and then we chose, we made the business decision not to give you that so that it gives you some reading room. That's, that was the only purpose. Otherwise, the invoices are, I mean, are ready so that we can submit them. But what I want to propose is, right now, uh, there are obviously some concerns, uh, from the city and the city staff with, with the invoices, and what I would like to do is, I would like to be able to work with them to resolve it. Again, these comments that have been repeated are old invoices prior to our instituting the QA QC, uh, process. So what I, what I would like to do is, is do that, and I'm willing to do whatever we need to do, uh, to work it. I mean, we're, we're here to, uh, to help the city, so, and we're here to solve it.
Ms. Valade? Uh, yes, mayor and council, I think that we can go back and forth, right, and it's gonna be redundant. But, uh, one thing that I want to say is that Mr. Jose Reyes is here, and he knows that we had issues with the invoices way before, um, we met with Nick. And the day that we met with Nick for the very first time, Mr. Boquín stated that he was aware that we had invoices issues.
I showed it on the screen, the front end.
I, I'm not gonna go back and forth, but what I'm saying is that, Mr. Reyes was aware. Techstar is only allowing us to submit two invoices per week. And we submit, it gives an error, we send back, they only address the error that was pointed out. They send it back to us, and then, yes, for the subdivision, um, I know that on December twentieth, Mr. Boquín stated that he was promising that he's gonna QC QA. There is an invoice, there is an email from Ms. Rossi Cartenas on December twenty-nine stating that she unintentionally bypassed protocol. And this is for the subdivision that she's stating that, um, oh, because I assigned Mr. Ryan up to those invoices because obviously my grants department has their plate full to kind of catch up and make sure that we get reimbursed. Even in the invoices for the county, we don't have deliverables to send to the county in order for us to get reimbursed. So same process, the county wants to make sure that they review everything line by line before they reimburse us. And I'm not, I'm not here trying to, it's just, it's frustrating. Um, and I think that we've tried working, um, and all I'm saying, at this point, I know that everything that we showed you, we've shared with them. What they showed you all today, they haven't shared with me. Because the communication has stopped. Mr. Reyes sends emails here, back and forth, only related to our names and our county, but I mean, it just doesn't seem, we're not, we don't have the same relationship we used to have. And that's concerning to me, because we need to make this work. All I'm trying is to get the city reimbursed for funds that are, um, that belong to us. Right? We are a small municipality, we don't have the cash flow that other municipalities have, that the county has, the City of Oaxaca has, we don't have that amount of cash flow. Right? I mean, the reason I brought it here is because you all need to be made aware. Right? Uh, I mean, it's two years in the making. COVID hit, we kind of, you know, kind of navigated through that. But here we are, we've done our end. Now we're doing it, all we're trying is to just get reimbursed. But we can't because it's just error to error, I mean, hours, counties' hours are being spent in correcting. And I invite any county member to stay with us and go through the chaotic, I mean, it's just tedious.
I have a question.
Name? Mr. Cruz?
I believe you have a question. Yeah, my questions are going to be directed towards Danabon, or Representatives of D E C, right? I have in front of me the signed contract with the City of Socorro and D E C, and I understand the questionable request for time sheets in middle. In the contract that you all signed, or your representatives signed, it states that the request, the documentation for reimbursement for the red cost, including hours, which equals a document similar to a time sheet, it's written in the contract, it's been, it's been accepted by you and it's been accepted by the city. I don't know that the quality of work on behalf of Danabon is what's being questioned here at the moment. I believe it's the inability to invoice on time, in a timely manner, in fashion. I understand, and I think that we are very well aware of maybe the poor or negligent work on behalf of PM, who at that time represented Danabon. And since then, you all have taken the corrective action of removing that individual, and we appreciate that as city representatives. But at the same time, I think that the only way to remedy, right now, and to salvage, not only the relationship, but the work, right, let's make a wrong right, is Danabon willing and accepting of the ability for the city to receive that reimbursable for hours that our staff has had to work for correcting the invoices? And second, invoices pending October, November, December, I just wanna know what the delay would be for some of those.
And then I can answer, uh, the question, I appreciate the question. The first one was the agreement that we signed with the city. We work with TechStop, actually 50% of our work is with TechStop. We don't have this issue with TechStop on all of our projects. So it's not like that we are not familiar with what is required. We did, as I indicated, we submitted time sheets. Then they came back and they said, "We don't need time sheets, show hours." We did show hours, as you can see, the directive was from, you know, city. You don't need time sheets anymore, do not include time sheets, we did not. 6/22, 6/1, basically June 1st of this year. So we followed that very same direction. Then, in 7, basically July 20th, a month and 20 days after, they come back, you know, basically TechStop had told the city representatives, "Yes, we do need time sheets." So anything that, Mr. Cruz, that we had submitted prior to that date was gonna be obsolete. And the issues that we were talking about are all about border invoices. If there has been one invoice that we have submitted that you, since we have, I came to this body and talked, if there has been one invoice that you can show me there's any issues, I will, you know, I'll basically say whatever you wanna do. That's not the case, what we are talking about is all of the old invoices. And it's not fair, because the packet that I showed, I shared with you, if you flip through the two or three pages, this is what city had submitted, but we didn't wanna be at this point, to point fingers and tit for tat, but, you know, it's coming to that. If you look at that package, this was the package that the city has submitted, and I will, and I will show, basically, if you would be fine enough to pull it, the very next page. This is what city had prepared. It says period of service, 12/28/2021 through 1/31/2021, which doesn't make any sense. It's 20, started from December 28th of 2021 through January 31st of 2021. So that's not correct, but that's city's. You go to the next page. The period of service is January 1st of 2021 through January 1st of 2021, which is the same day. So this is not, I mean, we don't wanna be getting into this issue of pointing out mistakes and airing the dirty laundry. We have said that we do whatever it takes, you posed a question, will we be willing to pay for the additional hours that the city staff has put in? Absolutely. You know, whatever the fair hours are, the previous presentation showed for 13 invoices that they spent about 41 hours. That basically, you know, accounts for maybe about three hours per invoice. What is the customary hours that let you review invoices of this magnitude? And we have invoices regarding the, you know, we're talking about arterial one and Nuevo Waco, basically, two projects that they're reversible from TechStop. But again, if you go back to the spreadsheet, most of these things, for whatever reason, if it is sitting somewhere, the question that I asked, again, if this is what we are talking about, if it is our mistakes that we are pointing out, look at the cover sheet that I presented to you. May 23rd of 2021, we submitted the invoice. January 6th is when the city is submitting it to TechStop. What happened in between? I understand that you take, based on what you said, you spent 40 hours on under review, that's one of them. What happened to the other 200 and some hours? This is not fair, we are trying to work, we are trying, but majority of these invoices sat final for a long period of time. We kept on, and I think that the TechStop representatives on the call, they kept on receiving calls from our subconsultants, which are minorities and small businesses. They couldn't, you know, basically continue working and waiting to get paid. I came to this body to tell you that we'll do whatever it takes to make this thing work. And, you know, I wanna make sure that the project is, this is taking away from the most important part of this thing, which is the project. Nobody talks about the project, this is an administrative issue. I know that there is the reimbursement part of it, but we, majority of our work we do is for public agencies. We are in the same situation with the counties and cities in Houston, in Dallas, in Austin, and in San Antonio. This is not new to us, but this is the first time really that we are having difficulty. And Ms. Rolarte talks about, I acknowledge the fact, and you saw on the email, the gentleman who was the project manager before indicated in an email, FYI, city says we got some minor comments. I will be more than happy to provide you those copies, but you see that on the, it says minor comments. Never asked it was FYI, and basically that was it. The next one he sends out, in November 9th, he basically says, "There are some issues that we have been told that there are invoices, some of which are belonging to the city." But what Ms. Rolarte is just focusing on, I am willing to do whatever it takes, and we gotta reimburse the city for the hours that they've taken. And the question that you posed, why aren't we invoicing? Wasn't this the discussion, the topic of discussion that she wanted to have some time to be able to catch up? We're basically not invoicing to accommodate. I thought that that was gonna come across as a goodwill gesture, but, you know, now we're getting, you know, thrown under the bus because of that as well. It's a good deed on our part, we were gonna say, "Hey, look, you know what, we're not gonna invoice for three or four months" so that you guys can catch up. I'll be more than happy to, you know, if we need to hire a third body, an independent one, to do this thing and submit it to the city, I'll be more than happy to do that. The projects are going great, the mayor was there, the council member, Reyes was there at the public stakeholder meeting. We had a tremendous showing of the public, the city manager and her staff were there. It just, it was working, the big part of it is the technical part of it, nobody's talking about that. Normally on all projects, that's the part that is challenging to the public, to the officials, that they wanna know why, and... But that's forgotten, and then we're focusing on the administration. This is the first time I'm coming to a council, my 36 years, this is the first time I'm coming in front of the council to answer about really invoices.
Mayor, Ms. Pieroos was next. Ms. Pieroos?
Let me clarify, this is the second time, the first time was, uh...
Yes, you're right, you're correct, that's right, I am.
Real quick, this is, um, we are the client. We hired you to, but our people shouldn't have been the ones to catch these mistakes.
You're right, you're absolutely right, and I take responsibility for that.
To catch these mistakes.
Yes.
You have a job to perform, you're charged for that job.
Yes.
Okay? Now our staff is doing better than by others. That's what we need to focus on, we're being worked, we need to focus on that. Regardless of who was the project manager before, that is not our concern. Our concern is to move the city forward and the money that is owed. So you need to, we need to stop, we shouldn't be in this position, not you and not us. You have a job to perform.
Yes.
Ms. Rolarte has to do her job, she has to report to her councilman, uh, to the higher officials, what's going on. And she has proof, she has shown her proof. You know, this thing about, you know, I didn't get a message, that's not our concern, that's not our job, it's your job. Your company's job. You guys were hired to do a specific performance, and you guys are failing, Ms. Rolarte.
Yes, ma'am.
Just suggestion, giving another company for the future project. And so this company can provide, uh, you know, set, and so we settle for, we need to settle with all these invoices and TechStop and lending, et cetera. Because if we continue like this, obviously you guys are bombarded, you told us you have all these other big waves under your umbrella.
No ma'am, that's not, I apologize, but that's not the case at all, this is a top priority. That's why you have the COO and the president of the company here. I am a very hands-on individual, and since I've been involved, I have basically got to know the projects better than, you know, most other people that they're involved.
I know, but you came here to tell us what our city is not doing. We shouldn't be in this position, it should be just you, you were hired to do a job, sir, your company. I'm not saying particularly, I'm saying your company is hired to do a job. Don't come over here pointing fingers, because our cities should not have to prepare proof or view your mistakes at all. That is your job, that's what you're getting paid for, that's what you're charged for, I mean, you can charge a brief in, it's not cheap, it hasn't been cheap. We've been, you know, we've been partners for a long time, and, you know, you've done very well with the city, very well. Don't come here pointing fingers, I think that's very disrespectful, uh, you know, to our, even to our employees and factories, put their job aside to take care of your job, your company's job. And then, still we have this, this is, I'm sorry, I'm not ever saying that, you know, telling us that we're gonna get charged to review for your mistakes, that's wrong, that's completely wrong. I don't think we should be paying for your mistakes at all. And I'm sorry, yeah, passionate about this, but this is money coming from our pockets, from our city pockets, from our constituents, and that's not right, Ms. Rolarte. Again, the question is, uh, we have two engineer firms, one for future projects, and another one to complete what we already have on the table.
So I do feel that any project, any future project, we can go off together. Um, right now, my recommendation would be is to halt work authorization number three and eight until we get it under control, um, and continue with the other projects. Once that invoicing gets cut off and we feel pretty comfortable, then we can kind of restart. Uh, those are our two major projects, but right now, like I stated, we're working with the ones from the county, the general engineering, plus all these TechStop projects. And keep in mind, what's gonna get us in trouble is the administration of the invoicing, not the technical stuff. The technical stuff, the technical stuff we can fix. The administration is what's gonna get us in trouble, and they can, the Federal Highway Administration can come back and say, "We're not gonna reimburse you." Then we're stuck with the bill.
So what is your suggestion at this point? I, 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 I know we've already heard the, I was ending with, but what is your executive recommendation?
Correct, I think not for that, we would have to go into executive session, I would wanna legal counsel to provide us more information. Uh, we do have a contract with them, um, and I think that, you know, that would be an executive session item so we can ask our attorney what options we have. Right? But I mean, at this point, my recommendation is just, let's halt, let's get it under control, let's fix it, and then let's move on.
So I wonder how that's gonna take, we have this information last two, the last two weeks, and we didn't get exactly what we had requested.
Correct, so what I'm, what I'm...
That, I'm sorry. We have, and I know that maybe we've carried out, and it's still not carried out, I don't know if you've even posted me, you're...
And that is correct, Ms. Pieroos, but you have to understand that right now we're October, November, December. So we still have to work to be able to review those invoices and be able to submit for... Uh, what I'm asking is, let's halt so we don't get invoiced further and get behind further than we are already at. So let's just halt them, let's try to fix it as fast as we can, and then we will report back. Like I said, we're gonna report back periodically to give you updates if we're getting the information that we need or we don't. Um, that's my recommendation right now, it's just like, I'm three months behind. When does it end, and we continue going? Right? I don't know what these other three invoices are gonna look like, I'm hoping that they do their QCQA and we don't have to deal with this anymore. And I hope that that's what I'm gonna report back. But for now, I just, we're overwhelmed. Right? And I'm asking, like, let's, let's take, let's halt, those two, the other ones are working great, and we're already too far ahead on those, that we need to continue working. But I wanna emphasize, what's gonna get us in trouble is the administration part of it.
One moment, I believe Mr. Duffsey had a question.
So, last question, one of the comments, we know that projects may get stopped or restarted. We learned that, it can start with you guys or discover somebody else. We did learn that, and that's when it wasn't expressed fully. As an educator, a lot of kids tell me, "I, you failed me." I didn't fail you, you failed yourself. So if anything were to come out of this, that the City's court didn't do anything to Danabon. Danabon did not prove themselves to us. That's, that's the first part. We're losing money, and we're gonna lose a lot of money. This project is gonna be exponential now, because if we were only turning in two, two reimbursements a month, we're never gonna get that money for 20 years, at the rate we're, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, five, six years at the reimbursement. And the audit. We could get in big trouble when we get sued, and everybody just cleans their hands and leaves us and our citizens looking at each other, and where are the money for the sidewalks? Where are the money for this work? That's the problem. And that's the problem that I have. And I'm not in the business of doing whatever we wanna do, but I'm in the business of saving money for our citizens, for paying our employees more. That's gonna bring me projects to spend, guess what? We might not get X or Y project because we have to pay TechStop more. So, it's a dilemma for us.
more. So, it's a dilemma for us.
Um, who's next? Yes, Corinna.
So, we, we are saying that we are taking full responsibility for this. We're not saying we're not taking responsibility for this. Uh, it just felt a little bit, uh, because this, this happened under the prior project manager, but we were asking for is the opportunity to correct them. That's all we're asking. And then because that project manager was working for us, we take responsibility for it. There's, there's no question that, uh, that we do. So it just felt that we just need, need the opportunity to be able to, uh, to correct whatever we can. And, and it doesn't go, it, it's not overnight, kind of. These are old invoices. These are old invoices. Year old and stuff like that. They're just, they, they come back. So we have not gone through these old invoices yet, and that, that's, that's why we are here.
Mr. Cruz?
I wanted to make a motion to, going to executive to discuss with our attorney. Seven.
Corinna Reyes?
Yes.
Cesar DeHalle?
Yes.
Alejandro Barquio?
Aye.
Julie Cruz?
Yes.
And Ivan Romo Villalobos?
Yes.
Music. Anti-music. Music. Anti-music. Music.
How are you? What question did you for nine hours?
Thank you, sir.
How you doing, Andre?